Good evening, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands.
Thank you, everyone. Chris, can you take roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Tietzart.
Here.
This is Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Yashimura.
Here.
Great. Brings us to 3.1 Portrait of a Graduate Discussion, Todd?
Yeah, this one is a quick one, so we can get to the main purpose while we're here. But we will be continuing our Portrait of the Graduate work that we started last, basically last winter in January. We got through one meeting, basically. We started delving into landscape shifts. And folks are wondering how we will go about this. I think with the era of Zoom and how easy it makes it for people to pretend or to attend meetings, it should be easy to access even more people than we had. We had anywhere from 50 to 70 signed up to participate in the meeting. We got through, basically, one meeting that looked at landscape shifts, and that's looking at what 21st century learning design should be and where we should be heading with our students. So we will review where we were, what our purpose is, what we intend to accomplish. So we will start sending out communication here in the next two months, being November and December. And then we will be getting information out to everyone who is part of the committee, and then see if we have new folks who would like to be a part of the committee. So we will again involve our students, those who have graduated and was participating last year, and then students who are currently enrolled also. So just want to let everyone know that we did want to get through the first semester. And then now that the first semester is over, we will be rolling that out as we get to the start of the new year. So didn't want anyone to think that we were not going to continue that, so.
Any questions, Ellen? Great, alrighty.
Alright, I want to get to the survey, which is the entire purpose of why we are here. Going to share my screen here in a minute. Alright, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yeah, alright. So, first of all, I want to thank everyone for filling out the survey in terms of our families, our staff, and our students. What we wanted to do is, one, check how things are going, and then look to get feedback on what we could possibly look at, if any, changes for next semester. So we were very pleased with results. We got lots of good results that we want to talk about tonight. And we are presenting everything that we have, everything that was handed in in terms of data collected. And responses will be made available to the public for viewing. So we wanted to go over what the results showed tonight. So as you can see here, Northwest Local School District First Semester Survey Results. So on October 22, 2020, we surveyed our Northwest Local School District families and staff and students to gather and obtain feedback on our processes and the pinpoint areas where we have succeeded and areas that we can use improvement. The survey results were to help us know the best way to put plans in place for the second semester. Like I said, very pleased with our survey respondents. 3,954 family responses. Of those responses, 2,206 had in-person students. 1,322 had remote learning students. 426 had both in-person and remote students. We had 3,704 student responses. And again, we only did grades four through 12. We did not do preschool K1, 2, or 3. And we had 601 staff responses. The first thing that we did go over were safety protocols. And so I'm going to, what we're going to do with each area is, we're going to take turns going over them. So I'm going to cover the safety protocols, and then other AO staff members will cover different areas. So for safety protocols, what we wanted to check on was, how satisfied are you with the safety protocols that are in place? For example, social distancing, mask cleaning protocols. For our family survey, we wanted to make sure that people understood that we looked as neutral, as satisfied, along with somewhat satisfied and extremely satisfied. So if you look at our family results, everything was skewed through neutral on up. We did have 69 say they were extremely dissatisfied. 171 say they were somewhat dissatisfied. But the majority, an overwhelming percentage, stated that they were very satisfied with the safety protocols that were in place as far as our families go. For our staff, pretty much the same kind of numbers. Anywhere from, everybody who rated a 3, 4, or 5 felt like staff felt that safety protocols were in place. And that most of them felt that they were extremely satisfied, somewhat satisfied, and neutral. Again, we felt like that was, they were satisfied with how things were going. So if you look at the bottom there, 28 were extremely dissatisfied, and 2 were somewhat dissatisfied. For our students, 977, almost 1,000, were extremely satisfied. 1,180 were somewhat satisfied. 3 neutral, 1,142 were satisfied. And then we had 249 somewhat dissatisfied, and 159 extremely dissatisfied. So again, these were safety protocols that were put in place. These are masks, these are cleaning, social distancing, and our cleaning protocols of our schools, so.
Hey Todd, on the staff that were extremely dissatisfied, was there anything in the free text about why they were dissatisfied? Or that they may have been turned about?
Jenny Blust is going over comments. Brenda, is there anything you want to add to that piece, since you looked at the majority of the data?
I think that there was a wide variety of comments, Jim. People were looking at not wanting to wear the mask, not feeling like they were able to keep social distance in every environment. And so there are definitely questions and slides coming up that we'll get into some specifics on these things.
Okay, okay, thanks Brenda.
Is that for the staff survey? Can I ask about the parent survey? What were the concerns of the parents or families surveys?
So again, we're going to go through each of these in more detail, but they were wide-ranging in terms of safety. And you have to remember here, this represents families who chose not to send their students as well as students who are actually attending in person. So, you know, a good portion of the families that responded, Joe, were families that had already made that choice for their own reasons. Probably many of them very valid reasons related to safety.
Okay, thank you.
So again, a lot of, a lot of the questions that follow through here, and there's a ton of questions. It's probably a good 45 minutes to an hour worth of questions as we go through these. They will cover a lot of the, what they were not satisfied with and were as we go through. But again, some of these didn't want their kids to go to school to begin with, and some of the students didn't want to go to school to begin with. So just continue to look, continue to ask questions, but jot down some notes if you don't find what you're looking for as we go forward. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Daryl, who's going to talk specifically about the cohorting model.
So one of the questions that we asked our families, our students, and our staff was specifically around the cohorting model that we chose to enact this fall. And the cohorting being specifically those self-contained groups where students are in the room and getting all their learning from one location. So when you look at the family survey, the elementary and preschool, overwhelming had, if you look at the neutral up through the satisfied, there were 93% that were satisfied with the cohort model. We had 6% that were dissatisfied in some way or another. At our middle school, we had 48, almost 49% who were satisfied. And when you look at the neutral, it's up to 90. We had 9.8% of our middle schools that were dissatisfied with the model. At the high school, there's 20.9% that were dissatisfied. And then 38.8 that were satisfied. And when you look at the neutral and satisfied together, it was 79.2. So a little bit more at the high school where there's a greater need to kind of have some of those differentiated classes for the unique electives that they have and the different levels of classes at the core area. When we asked that same question of our staff with how satisfied they are with the cohorting model, about 15% said they were dissatisfied with it. 84.9 were either neutral or satisfied with, over, almost 60% saying that they were satisfied with the cohorting model. And a lot of the comments were around the safety piece, feeling like the cohorting model was the safest way to be in school. Related to that, we did ask specific questions about social distancing. And our question around social distancing was really about looking at options for changing the model. And how comfortable would you be if we decreased the distance in classrooms to less than six feet? Knowing that some of our classrooms already are less, as we said, six feet is the best you can do. And we try to keep a maximum social distance. So this question is really about reducing the amount of social distance we have right now to bring more remote students back to in-person. And you can see the family, staff, and student surveys are a little bit different. The families, almost 47% said they were not comfortable with decreasing social distancing. And again, these are people that are currently both in-person and remote combined. And only 35% were comfortable if we decreased that amount of spacing that we're using. Our staff, 67% were uncomfortable with changing our social distancing that we're currently using. Only 19% felt comfortable with reducing that amount of social distance. Students were a little bit more split. So only 28% were uncomfortable. 45% were comfortable with decreasing the amount of social distancing. So you can see a little bit more variance when we asked those kind of pointed questions around reducing the amount of social distancing that would be required to bring more students back in person. And our families and our, our staff are less comfortable with that than our students are.
Alright, for student movement, Heidi, I believe you were going to take this one.
I'm sorry, Todd, I was not aware of that.
Okay, well, I can take this one. So how comfortable would you be with increased student movement during the school day? In other words, switching classes? So for the family survey, what we looked at was, in other words, would you be okay with going to a seven bell day? Or a six bell day? Or a five bell day? Or a four bell day? So for the family survey, 5 and 4, which is you're somewhat comfortable or extremely comfortable, 42.9% were somewhat comfortable. And if you throw in the family piece, it gets all the way up to 60. And then you had anywhere from 17 to 19, which adds up to about, basically 37% were not comfortable. With the staff, however, it is vastly different. If you look at the uncomfortable piece of increased student movement, which is moving from bell to bell or class to class, 32 and 24, obviously doing the math real quick, is 56% are not comfortable with them doing more movement or switching classes. So staff, a little different than the family there. And then the students were different also, in that only 20 of the, 20% of them were somewhat comfortable with changing classes, and the majority of them were uncomfortable with moving, so. If you go to the next piece, and that's a hybrid model. And hybrid can be many different things. So hybrid can be two days a week. It can be an A/B schedule. It could be every other week, like some school districts are doing. So it can be many different options, but what it is not, it is, it is not all remote learning, and it is not five days a week in person. So in order to maintain social distancing of six feet in our classrooms and allow more students to return to in-person learning, how willing would you be to consider a hybrid model? If you go back to the earlier survey, they did not, in our responses to our surveys, want to give up the six feet distancing. And that's the, the only way we can bring people back is to keep the six feet distancing. So the best way and easiest way to do that is a hybrid. So when we asked families, how willing would you be to do a hybrid schedule, which allows us to do this? You see that basically 43% are extremely unwilling. And with families, this does cause issues. It's daycare issue, basically, especially if you're elementary and probably.
Back is to keep the six.
Was that me echoing? I thought I heard somebody speak, sorry. That's 30% plus 13 is 43% is extremely unwilling because it does provide daycare issues, especially if you're elementary or a sixth grade parent, and maybe even a seventh and eighth grade parent. Heck, that could even be a freshman. Maybe they don't feel secure with the students being at home. If you look at our students, they're pretty much all over the place, depending on 4th through 12th grade. But that's what it looks like with our family and our students if you look at a hybrid schedule. The next one.
When you're talking about a hybrid model, let's say it's an A/B schedule, and the kids go Monday, Tuesday, and then the other ones go Thursday, Friday. Is that doing that cohorting, or is that changing classes every bell?
That would be changing classes every bell. So that, yeah, so the hybrid models that are out there right now, so you've got Princeton City Schools who goes, one group of kids goes five days a week, and then the next group of kids go five days a week. So you're five weeks on, five weeks off. Then you've got Fairfield's model, which is two days on, everybody's off Wednesday. The other kids come to two days a week. And they just recently switched back to five, but now they're considering going back because of the increase in cases. Same thing Oak Hills was doing. So hybrid is, you don't go a full week of school.
Gotcha.
The next one, in order to maintain social distancing of six feet in our classrooms and to allow more students to return to in-person learning, how would you be, how willing would you be to consider a hybrid model? Some days in-person each week and some days remote? So with our staff, we surveyed them. And what this does is it creates more exposure to more people. So when you look at their responses, extremely and somewhat uncomfortable, you've basically got about 34% here are extremely or somewhat uncomfortable. You put another 22 in there, and you're 56% are somewhat neutral, uncomfortable. And then you've got another, basically 43% who are somewhat comfortable or extremely comfortable.
The, the only thing I would say is, we, we've got to make up our mind when we're doing this and we're looking at percentages. Are we going to make neutral go towards the one side? Are we going to make neutral go to the other? I think we have to be careful to pick and choose which side we put the neutral on. Because at the beginning of the presentation, the neutral was going every time to the positive, and now it's going the other way. So, I mean, that, that's.
Yeah, neutral in my mind is going with the four and five, is the way we looked at it. Brenda, is that correct?
Yeah, initially, we looked at it with neutral being part of that category of people that are not expressing dissatisfaction, so or unwillingness. Doesn't mean that they love the idea, but they didn't feel strongly enough to say that they were dissatisfied or unwilling. And so we kind of looked at them as part of that supportive, whatever the topic is, group, even though we know neutral can mean lots of different things. And probably in the future, we would not have a neutral category on our survey because we don't know exactly what people are telling us with that.
Sure. And I just bring that up because I know people are going to question that. Because if we, if we keep it at the four and five, then in this case, where over 60% of the staff is saying they would consider a hybrid as long as we could do this six feet social distancing, which is a big difference than 40%, you know what I mean?
As a part, you run into where you're. Yeah, the part that's different here is the family versus the staff and the students.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's, that's all.
So the next piece is the remote learning piece. If you support remote learners, how satisfied are you with the remote learning model that is currently being used for remote students? So for our staff, and you consider neutral being the same as somewhat satisfied and extremely satisfied, you've got 41% neutral, 25%. So that puts you at 66%. And 76% are somewhat neutral or satisfied. And you have around 22% who are dissatisfied for our staff.
Todd, what, if, if I'm doing remote learning, and I don't want to get on for three or four days, and I don't feel like doing that, what is, what can the teacher do? Or what can we do to make sure, hey, Jim, you need to get on, do your work? What, what are we doing to get by that problem?
We are making phone calls home. We are calling parents at work. We are texting. We are providing our cell numbers as staff to students. We are emailing. We are putting counselors and trying to get them to help us make contact. We are using our truancy to get them in place. We have had police, our truancy officer make contact. Some of that has been met with some good positive conversations. Other times, the door's been slammed in her face and met with nothing. But that is a huge struggle right now and always has been. It was last spring, and it continues to be this fall. We do have those who are not doing what they need to do. But it's not a lack of effort by staff and trying to make contact, trying to call. But we're trying to range after-school tutoring, in-school tutoring during the day, and trying to do as much as we can. We are looking specifically at our secondary level of what they can bring those kids into to get additional support. But yeah, that continues to be an ongoing battle.
If, if I'm doing remote learning, can, can the teacher, is the teacher able to look at what I'm looking at on the computer? I mean, can I, can I be, I'm in the classroom, and I got YouTube pulled up. Looking, can the teacher tell what you're looking at? Or what you're, if you're not doing the classwork? Or what, what can the teacher see?
Yeah, Leslie, you want to chime in with this and the cohorts and some of the things they could do?
So we have a tool called Go Guardian that as long as the students are using a district-provided device and the teacher has set it up, the teacher can see and kind of monitor either thumbnails of the entire class or zoom in on an individual student to see what the students are working on. It keeps track over time of what sites they're on. And you can get reports and send those to parents to say, hey, of our 90 minutes of class, you know, 45 minutes, your child was on YouTube, that kind of thing. So they do have a tool.
Okay. And what's the percentage of students that are doing the remote learning that that tool is used with those district computers? Because can, can I, can I go, if I'm doing remote learning, can I use my own personal computer at my house? Or do I have to?
We can't force you to. We've given, I would say, the majority of our remote students are using district-provided devices. We did have a few families that said, we don't want one for whatever reason. And we said, as long as you're able to access, I can't make you take our device. Parents are worried about it breaking and then having to pay, are happy with the device that they have. So, but the majority of the students are using our devices.
And what percentage of our students are doing that? Is it 90%? Is it 80%?
I would say it's 90%. It, it was a very small handful of cases where I had parents asking, they didn't want a district handbook.
And, and the only reason I ask is, we were just out in New Mexico, and a friend of our daughter's is a third grade teacher. And she could tell that the one kid was on YouTube, a third grader. And she called the parent, told the parent, and says, well, I'll go down and check. So, you know, 10 minutes later, she's back in the class, and then she goes five minutes later back onto YouTube. So, you know, then the teacher had to call the parent again during class time. So do we see that as a problem with any of our teachers having to do that? Or, 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 I mean, can they find out right away that a kid is not doing that? Or is it, you have to ask for a report or get a report at the end of the day or the week? Or what is it?
You could check it, and you can even block sites. So you can make it so that kids can't access YouTube on the tab that they're on. So there is that ability. I think more than anything, we aren't seeing students joining a Zoom class and then getting onto something else like YouTube. I think more, it's, they're just not coming at the assigned time. So it's reaching them and getting them to come to the class at the right time would be more of a challenge than like keeping them engaged on the actual work at the time, if that makes sense.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Where did the teachers go if this child is habitually not, you know, going into the, the class, the remote learning class? Where, where can the teachers go and say, hey, look, I got a problem with Johnny or Suzie? You know, can you follow up on that? Is there any kind of mechanism for those teachers to use? Todd?
Well, there's all kinds of mechanisms. Brenda, Dustin, and Leslie, do you guys want to touch on this?
Yeah, I'll jump in just quickly from a secondary level. Our counselors, our admins are doing home visits quite often, knocking on doors, asking what's going on. The, when the teacher kind of meets their frustration point of, you know, I've emailed, I've made this personal phone calls, can you help? That's where they're also stepping in, as well as attendance letters are also going out. So even if the parent isn't receptive to the email or the phone call, there's a letter still coming in as well. They are absolutely pouring a ton of resources into this effort to, to keep kids connected. And through their efforts, it really whittled it down, comparatively speaking, to last March, of the number of kids who are staying disconnected. At this point, if they're staying disconnected, it's because of avoidance, more than just like being out there in space. So I'm really proud of the work that, that they've been doing. But to answer your question, counselors, admins, SROs, truancy officers, they're all at their disposals.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, our teachers and our administrators have been relentless in trying to engage these families. You know, first problem we had to solve was making sure everybody had access. And I think we've done a fairly good job of that. We were able to add Wi-Fi and internet access as a resource for those that needed it remotely this year. So we make, making sure that barrier is not the primary reason why they're not engaging, Joe. But, you know, it, there are, there is frustration with, in our teaching staff. You know, when you work hard to put together an engaging, solid lesson, and you're there and ready to go, and consistently you have students that don't even log in for that, that's, that's frustrating. And so we do have our administrative staff, our counselors, our assistants, lots of people assisting with trying to find ways to engage these kids. But it is something that is a continual challenge. I agree with Dustin that we're in a much better place than we were in the spring. But it is something we have to keep working at, and, and we need families to partner with us on this because otherwise, we're still going to miss some students, and we, we don't want that to be happening. Uh, families to partner with us on this because otherwise, uh, we're still going to miss some students and we, we don't want that to be happening.
Right, uh, when, when um, say you're a math teacher, whatever, and you Zoom times ten o'clock or whatever and. Wha- what are the teachers finding? What percentage of kids are going in that time? Or, or, or can they go at a different time for that particular class?
Um, we've set up our motto, it's much stronger than it was in the spring in that we have scheduled. Uh, K to eight for sure. We have scheduled live virtual teaching session times um every day. But we do have, we do want to acknowledge the need for flexibility with different family situations. So we do ask teachers to record those live sessions and students are able to watch them outside of their scheduled time.
That we can monitor them that have come in at, say, it was a ten o'clock class and I want to do it at two o'clock. Is, is there a way that you can monitor that I did it at two?
Not a great way, Jim. The way we would know is based on the quality of work that's produced. So. If they're not able to do whatever it is that was modeled and, and practiced and taught in that lesson. It would be an indication that they probably did not watch the video, uh, did not complete the work. So that's kind of a, a back way of getting at uh whether or not we're, we're learning and we're mastering what we need to.
Are we seeing that as a, a, a problem, or is it just an isolation with some kids? Or the majority of the kids are, are there at, say, that ten o'clock?
Really varies from teacher to teacher, level to level, Jim. Um, our charge as a curriculum department is to make sure the instruction is engaging. And so we've been working really hard to um make sure that we're doing things when we're with kids and teaching. That make them want to come and participate in those live virtual sessions. Um, but is it, is it a problem? Yes, it's not an isolated couple kids. Um, it's, it's a good number that are not consistently participating in those live sessions, which is frustrating for teachers.
And do we think those kids that are doing that, are, are those the kids that wouldn't be coming to class if we were in, in? In class five days a week? Or is it just the actual, well, you know, I'm at home, I'm doing a remote, I'm not going to do it today. I don't feel like it. You, you know what I mean? Is that, is it that type of kid, or is that, or, or more kids doing that? You know, if it's saying, hey, I don't want to do it today.
I think it's a mix. I think in a, in a in-person pre-COVID situation, you would have had kids who weren't coming to school. We had absence rates, for example, at our high school of twenty to thirty percent a day um at times. And so we also have kids who came to class every day but sat and slept through class, right? So it's, it's not that all of this is unique to COVID, but it is um something that we're continuing to look at. And like I said, our, our strategy as a curriculum team is figure out how to provide engaging virtual instruction. And supporting our teachers in doing that, but that isn't going to reach everybody.
Is, is that what you're hearing across the board with others, all school districts? The same, same type of?
Yes, we, we talk consistently with other curriculum directors and instructional council. And we are finding that uh this is a challenge that's being faced all over the place. Um, particularly in districts that have similar demographics to ours, but everywhere. Um, and so it's something we have to keep attacking and be relentless about.
And do we feel that more kids are falling be- between the cracks and are getting further and further behind?
We know from, from data, obviously, I'm looking at it from a, from a higher level. But we know from data that we have more students that are failing first quarter this year than we've had in the past. Um, and some of that is due to lack of engagement, some of that is due to the fact that we're still measuring mastery of the standards. And so um I would say yes, but we have all different types of reasons for that and, and barriers that we need to overcome.
Yeah, okay, alright, thanks.
Sure.
Brenda, can I just ask you one quick question here? It's very academically critical of the seniors at both Northwest and at Colrain. To get their credits through and with, and in flying colors so they can graduate. What is the percentage right now, if you have those statistics of the seniors? Who um probably won't graduate?
We don't have that now, Joe. It's, it's way too early for that. We've got kids who are on track to graduate. Um, we have credit recovery classes, so um by the end of the third quarter, we'll have a better idea of what's going on. But there's no way to have those numbers right now.
I mean, we're looking at every single senior, making sure that they have a pathway to graduation, checking on their points that they've earned. But uh in terms of credits, obviously you know well that they have to pass courses to earn the required credit. And so that's something I'm confident that Mr. Fisher and Mr. Pollard and their teams are all over. I know our counselors are working hard at that every day. And Dustin, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add.
It's a conversation every single day. It, it doesn't, it doesn't, a day doesn't pass where we're not chasing seniors to graduate. So that is absolutely the charge and, and, and they're doing a great job of that. I would tell you, we're not in much of a different place than we would be in a non-COVID year around chasing seniors to get the job done. So we're, I, I, I would say we're right on track regarding our seniors where we've been in the past. And we'll continue to chase them and we'll get them across the stage.
And Dustin, what, what, in a non-COVID year, like you just said, wha- what's the percentage of seniors that aren't graduating?
Oh, it's critically low. Uh, if you make it to your senior year, there are very few seniors that don't walk across the stage.
Okay.
Uh, at this point in the year, at both schools, you're looking at chasing down somewhere between. Uh, thirty and seventy seniors to make sure that they're getting it done. And a lot of that has to do with state testing and, and different pathways like that. And, and, and that's exactly what they're facing right now. Both schools are chasing down just about that number of seniors to make sure that they're on track. Um, of course, you know, it, it's never any easier, um, despite all that's happening, that the pathways are as difficult as they've ever been. To get a kid across the stage, but we got the right people doing the right job.
One thing we do know for sure is that if a parent wants to know how a student is doing. There is no reason they don't. Um, there are progress reports, there are report cards, there is progress review book. That shows every day exactly what's going on in the class. There are teachers calling home, there are aides calling home, there are administrators calling home. There is absolutely one hundred percent no reason they should not know how their child is doing, what we can't do. Um, just like when they were in school is force them to do the work that is necessary um to get by. It's not a lack of work that's being supplied or a lack of instruction, it's just follow through. And, and when you put in the middle of a pandemic and um a couple of visits we've had at home, we've had the door slammed in our face. Because as the, the dad has told us a couple of times, my child's working forty hours a week helping our family get by. Um, you do what you have to do. We're not real worried about school right now, the exact word. So um it's tough times for everybody. And when you're in the middle of a pandemic, these are the realities of what you have to deal with. So there are a lot of things that could go um with remote, but when you look at a staff and their frustration. It comes up weekly at our um union meetings and, and it's how do you get the kids to stay involved? And um they're calling parents, but we can't just call once a quarter, once every three weeks. We have to stay in constant contact. So um our teachers are, are working hard, putting good lessons together. Can we get better? Oh yeah, we can continue to get better. We continue to evolve each month and, and we've got to get better second quarter, third quarter and fourth quarter. Um, we don't know how long this is going to go. So um we continue to work on our craft and continue to get better as we go through. Um, the next part of the survey is communication. And for this part, we're going to turn it over to Lindsay Creasy, Creasy.
Thanks, Todd. Um, as many of you all know, communication is, has always been something that we are continuously working to improve in our district. Um, our goal has not only been to provide all of our stakeholders with information. Um, but to be transparent in our communication and to establish two-way communication between our district and our stakeholders. Um, we've accomplished that in many ways this year. However, um, we realize that there's always room for improvement in this area. And so um one of the ways that we've tried to improve our communication is through surveys, right? Um, this method allows our district to communicate our ideas and our intentions. But it also allows us to gather feedback from our stakeholders to better understand how we should move forward. Um, and as we're putting the plans in place for next semester, we really wanted to understand how families assess the communication that they received. From our teachers and from the school. Um, in both of our family and student surveys, we asked the following question. Um, which was, how satisfied are you with the communication that you're receiving from your teachers and your school? Um, like many of the other questions, families and students were able to select from a linear scale. Um, of one to five, ranging from one, which was extremely dissatisfied, to five, um, which was extremely satisfied. Um, we had somewhere around three thousand nine hundred and fifty-four responses, and I think Todd said that before. Um, but knowing that is really important when you're actually looking at the survey. Um, as you can see on the family survey, we had one thousand six hundred and ninety-two people respond, which was um. You know, that they were extremely satisfied, which equals out to forty-two point eight percent um of our families. Um, twenty-six point five said that they were somewhat satisfied and seventeen point eight said that. Um, percent said that they were um neutral. If you're looking at the other side of it. Um, we had a hundred and seventy-three families that said that they were extremely dissatisfied. Um, and three hundred and thirty-eight um families that responded back to say that they were um somewhat dissatisfied. Um, with the information.
Lindsay, of, of those twelve percent that are not satisfied. Did they give a reason why they're, they're, they're dissatisfied? I mean, what's the majority of the reason? I mean, I, I mean, if you want to contact your teacher, you can contact your teacher and, you know, call him, email him. I, I don't know a teacher that won't call you back if you, if a parent, you know, sends them an email or calls them and returns a phone call. I, I don't understand what that twelve percent is dissatisfied about. How, I mean, wha- what, what are they saying?
Well, we received a variety of different answers. Um, and honestly, Jenny Blist is going to um go over the commentary that we had. That we left open for families to be able to um respond um and to share their concerns. Um, to also share the successes, the things that they think um are working. So Jenny's going to really cover that. And nail it on the head. I'm just gonna um go over the numbers. But um, you know, just to say this, um, they were all over the place. There were lots of different reasons. Um, why some of our families responded that they were happy with the communication that they had with their teachers and why others said um they weren't happy with it. Um, our student survey looks very similar to our family survey. Um, you'll notice that um we had more respondents say that they were somewhat satisfied. Um, with the communication that they had with their teacher and their uh school. Um, and then the second category that we came in the highest as far as the student survey is concerned. Uh, was that families, I mean, students said that they were extremely satisfied, which was twenty-eight point two percent of uh responses. That was very close though to our neutral responses, which was twenty-five point five. Um, when you, you know, put it together, um, and add the families that said that they were extremely um dissatisfied. Or somewhat dissatisfied. Um, it comes out that it's somewhere around twenty-three percent or less of the families um responded. That they were dissatisfied with the level of the communication that they received from their teachers and from their school. Um, you know, we went in and looked at the families that were satisfied um and tried to break it up. Um, by level as all, and also by model to get a better understanding of um how our families felt. Um, regardless whether they're in remote, in person, or if they were in preschool, elementary, middle, um, or high school. Um, the numbers remained high. Um, as far as remote was, was concerned. Um, ninety-one point three percent of our families that were preschool um said that they were, you know, satisfied. Um, or felt in that extremely satisfied, the somewhat satisfied um category. Um, but as they matriculate um from level to level, you'll see that that number kind of goes um a little lower. Or decreases as um the grade level gets a little higher. In elementary, it was ninety point one percent. In middle school, it was eighty-three point seven. But in high school, you see that there's a, a slight drop. Um, and it's somewhere between seventy-nine, um, seventy-nine point three percent of the families that are saying that they were satisfied. Um, with that. And so we really have to go through some of the comments to address. What we can do um to increase that, that communication and to um help them. I guess, feel better about the communication that they are receiving. Um, the in-person was pretty much the same. Um, except preschool families that were in uh in-person responding a hundred percent that they were satisfied. Um, or somewhat satisfied. On the elementary level, it was ninety-four point two. Um, middle school is eighty-nine point one. And in high school, once again, it was somewhere around seventy, it was actually seventy-eight point three percent.
You, you know, with the student survey there on the communication with the teacher. Look, you're with the teacher, if you're doing the cohorting, you're there every day with your teacher. And if you're doing remote, you should be on remote with your teacher every day. So, I, I mean, th- those ones that, the students that are saying they're not happy with communication. Well, you're either in class with your teacher or you're doing remote. So I don't know what that really means. If they're not satisfied with the teacher. They're able to be with a teacher either in person or on remote learning. And you can ask any question to a teacher when you're doing remote learning or in class. Is that not true?
Well, there's also a um, the, it may be the amount of time that they're actually having with that teacher too. Um, there may be, you know, communication as far as dealing with um, you know, Google Classroom. There could be a number of different things. So Jenny's going to really go through some of those, the, the data as far as the um, what families responded. But like I said, there were lots of different reasons um why families, you know, responded the way that they responded.
Another question on the teachers. Do the teachers have like um office hours like when, when they're not teaching? Hey, I'm available from noon to one o'clock for any of my kids that have questions on a specific class or course. Or whatever. So, so the students have other times during the day where I can call my algebra teacher. If I'm having trouble, say between twelve and one, or whatever that time would be. Do, do, do all the teachers have that ability?
And I'll, I'll yield to Brenda, because I think she should be able to answer that.
So for our teachers in the K to eight remote learning model, they're required to have at least sixty minutes of office hours per day, Jim. Um, it's a little different at the high school.
Alright, we'll move on to the second survey. Um, in March, when we first learned of COVID nineteen, we began putting together um a communications plan to make sure that our staff, our students and our families. Had information on how to stay healthy, um, about our plans for the school year and even the new processes and the safety protocols. That we were putting in place. Um, our communication includes a number of different things that we've done, whether it's how-to posters. Um, information on wearing face masks, hand washing, sanitizing, um, and I guess I should say ha- and hand sanitizing. Um, social distancing, floor markers, um, exposure charts that identified what staff would need to do if they thought they were exposed. Um, a question and answer Zoom meetings where staff could ask questions. Um, and our district administrators were present to answer their calls. Um, and we even created a weekly internal newsletter that went out um called NWLSD News. Um, so there's a lot of information um that's been given to our staff. And we wanted to see if the information that we put out had been effective um and how they felt about it. And so we did a staff survey asking um how satisfied they were with the communication from the district level. Um, regarding COVID, um, whether it was email, NWLSC news, our website, Facebook, um, or any other communication that we have. Um, once again, it was all, um, you know, respondents had a chance to choose um using the linear scale. Anywhere from one to five, with one being extremely dissatisfied and five being extremely satisfied. Um, and you'll see here that um, you know, we had uh thirty-five point seven percent of families. Um, responded that they were, I mean, of staff members responded that they were somewhat satisfied. Um, and twenty-two point nine percent responded that they were extremely satisfied. Somewhere around twenty-four point three, um, that they were neutral. Um, and, you know, this was, we received some of the staff surveys um information. And I'd say maybe a day or two after receiving the staff information, we put out a Zoom question and answer session. Um, because we realized that, you know, we wanted to be able to answer some of their questions. And if we were falling short on communicating, we wanted to um make sure that we were present as the district administrators. To answer any questions um that they may have have. Um, let's see, the percentage of staff that were neutral to extremely sat- satisfied with uh. Uh, communication around COVID um seemed to be pretty high. Um, in June, we surveyed our staff to find out how satisfied they were with communication and we were somewhere around eighty percent. When you look at the staff by level, whether it's preschool, elementary, middle, high school, or even other, and you break it out, you'll find that those numbers all were above eighty percent. So elementary was eighty-two point three, middle school was eighty point six, high school was eighty-nine point one. We did have lower numbers in preschool, which was sixty-three point six, but a much higher number in other, and that's for anyone who's not necessarily in the building, that may be district staff that felt like the communication that they've received from the district was extremely satisfying. Or in between neutral and extremely satisfying. We also asked the staff how satisfied they were with the communication that they were receiving from their building regarding COVID. So this would be information that they were getting from their district administrator or their building administrator. We found that these numbers also were were very good. Twenty-eight point eight percent said that they were somewhat satisfied, where twenty-seven point eight said that they were extremely satisfied about the information that they received regarding COVID. If you break that out by level, you'll find that eighty point six percent of our elementary staff felt anywhere from neutral to extremely satisfied with the building communication. On the middle school level, it was seventy-eight point four percent. On the high school level, it was eighty-five point one. But then at preschool, once again, we fell a little short. It was fifty-nine point one percent. And on our other, which would be anyone who's not in a building, it'd be sixty-one point nine percent. So when you put the numbers anywhere from neutral all the way up to extremely satisfied, that falls somewhere around seventy-nine point seven percent. And so last year, when we asked these same questions, I shouldn't say last year, but at the beginning of the year when we asked these same questions, our staff reported that they were around eighty percent as well. So it looks like the numbers have gone up slightly. So or in the case of building, communication remained the same.
All right, for academic instruction, Brenda Miller will take us through this.
So this is a large category, and we have a lot of questions. So several of us are going to share different parts of this section. First and foremost, I just want to say we said all the way along that student and staff's safety is our top priority right now during this pandemic. So that that is something we do not intend to change. However, we also are obligated to make sure that students have the opportunity to learn, and they are in fact learning. And so some of these questions help us to get at perceptions around those types of things. The first question that we asked our families is, how satisfied are you with the academic progress that your children have made so far this school year? We use the same scale, one extremely dissatisfied to five extremely satisfied. And you can see that there's a steady upward trend with more people feeling somewhat or extremely satisfied, and about sixteen percent in those two lower categories, extremely dissatisfied or somewhat dissatisfied. Can you go on to the next slide, please? Here's what that question looked like for our students. We asked the question of how satisfied are you with what you have learned so far this school year? You can see that the graph looks a little different. We have about a third of our students telling us they feel neutral on this question. We do still have the majority of our our students telling us that they're satisfied. But again, very similar to the families, we've got about sixteen percent here that are saying somewhat or extremely dissatisfied with the progress that they're making so far this school year. And that lines up pretty well with the data we've been looking at. We did a very deep analysis of our first quarter grades. Our buildings continue to look at both informal and formal assessment data to make sure we know where our students are at to the best of our ability. And so this is data that is perception data, how our families and our students report that they perceive they are doing with academic progress. But we actually want to back that up and make sure that we have quantitative data to show us are they in fact learning? And so we continue to look at that. Our buildings continue to look at that, and we look for ways to address students, as we've said all along here, not only that aren't participating as they should be, but also students that are not performing at the level that we need them to with relation to the standards. We did feel it was important to break this data down and look at it in different ways. So this slide is showing average satisfaction ratings. So if we took all of the responses that we received, it's showing us from our families and from our students, what was the average if we took all the ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives? I think it's a different way of looking at the data, but I think there's some things here to note. So the first disaggregation we did was looking at it by level, and and several others have mentioned this. If you look at this, looking just family to student at each level, you see that the ratings are pretty consistent. Families and students feel about the same. You see higher levels of satisfaction with academic progress that are preschool and elementary levels for families decreasing and moving more towards that average neutral rating for high schools. We also looked at it remote versus in-person. We wanted to pay very careful attention to how are our remote students feeling about academic progress and how are their families feeling? And so you can see here that there's some differences. The ratings from students are particularly for in-person learners, a little bit different than families. And you can see that we don't, you know, as we look at remote, there's a slight difference there, remote versus in-person for families. Less of a difference for students, but in both cases, remote overall average satisfaction rating being a little bit lower. The next area we looked at and surveyed was teacher access. So we have, in all of our levels, we have cohorting in place to keep students safe and reduce the number of contacts between staff and students. But the models for cohorting look different, as you know, at each level. Everything from an elementary level where I'm self-contained with my teacher all day, which isn't that different at K three than it would normally be with the exception of all of our special area courses. At the high school level, that looks different. We have some access to teachers for sure, and we're working on building that in more. But we have all types of situations where some of that instruction, both in-person and remote, is being provided through the computer with our teachers teaching virtually. So here's the question we asked about access to our families. We asked, how satisfied are you with the amount of access your children currently have to their teachers? And you can see, again, here, a steady upward trend towards that extremely satisfied category. We've got forty-one percent telling us they're extremely satisfied, twenty-five point two percent saying somewhat satisfied. And again, on the flip side, we've got about sixteen percent that's been a consistent number saying dissatisfied or extremely dissatisfied. Our question to our students related to teacher access is a little bit different in terms of how it was phrased. The question was, are you able to get in touch with your teacher or teachers when you need help? The scale here was one was never and five was always. Pleased to say that we had almost half of our students say always, and a third of our students say, you know, close to always with that rating of four. One point six percent said never, which that's concerning to me as an educator, but glad to see that the majority said, yes, in fact, I do have access to my teacher.
You find like, Brenda, back back to that. To that one point six, those fifty-eight students that say they never can get a hold of your teacher. Are they really trying to get a hold of their? I I find that hard to believe that a teacher is not available at some time for a kid for a kid in a class. I I just, I I don't, I don't, I don't know how true that number actually really is. I mean, you either in class or you're doing remote, you can get in touch with your teacher. I I find that hard to believe.
I think I can shed some light on some of those when we get to the comment section.
Okay.
On why that is, so.
Sorry, I got so many questions for you.
It's really okay. I can't wait.
Right, Jim. So this is all perception data, and anytime you ask people any question, you're going to get a range of responses depending on what just happened or where they're at at the moment. So we don't know with a lot of these questions, we haven't asked these things of our families and students before in a formalized way. I think one of the things we've learned from this process, like Lindsay said, is part of improving communication is to keep asking questions and to reflect on the data we get back. So we don't know, you know, what percent would have said they were satisfied at the high school level with their academic progress prior to COVID. We don't have that information, but we can only look at what we have now and continue to keep that feedback loop open. So here again, we're talking about access to teachers. This is looking at it from perspective of averages. If you look down the student side first, you can see that in all cases we're at least at an average of four. You know, in some cases, it's a little bit higher than that, and and four is the bottom. So not a lot of difference from preschool through high school in terms of students' feelings about access to teachers. The same is true for remote versus in-person. You see, those numbers are very similar. One of the things that we did look at is we broke down the student ratings on that bottom graph there, that chart, looked at just in-person students by level. And you can see that even looking at it that way for just in-person students, the range is four to four point five, with elementary being highest and high school being lowest. But remembering that four means that I'm somewhat satisfied with my access on average. Certainly, we know we have some that are dissatisfied, and we need to dig into why. Family ratings here are a little bit different. So if you look at, stay there, Todd, for me. Thanks. If you look at family ratings here, you can see that we do have a change from preschool, elementary school up through high school in terms of perception of access from families. So preschool, elementary school, it's four point two. By the time we get to high school, it's three point three. So that that's really close to that neutral or dissatisfied rating on average, which is something we're continuing to look at, and and we know, we've talked about it, Dustin and Leslie and Jack and Joe on a regular basis of how do we keep looking for ways within our safe model of cohorting to increase access to teachers? Looking at remote and in-person for families, you can see a four point O is the average for in-person, where a three point seven is remote, so it's slightly lower. Again, something that we want to continue to work on and improve. I think overall, just these two sections, they tell me that the efforts we've made to put more intentional live virtual teaching and more structure in our remote learning academy, in particular at the K eight level, has made some change and shift positively in terms of how students and families are feeling about remote learning. We are not perfect. We continue to look to improve, but compared to the feedback we received in May and June, definitely, there was a lot more to celebrate with the progress that we've made in these areas. Leslie's going to talk further about several other areas of academic instruction, but at this time, Chris McKee is going to talk about technology and instructional technology and the feedback we received there.
Thanks, Brenda. I just wanted to start out, despite the abrupt end to the school year last year, you probably recall that we had to have a Chromebook pass out at the end of the year. The decision was made that we would leave those Chromebooks out over the summer, which was probably on on my part, a bad decision. That's one of the things that we got to fight for on our departments, just to make sure that we're going to be able to accomplish what we need when we return. And I think probably we should have gotten some of those Chromebooks back because, you know, then when we started this year, you know, Matt Fisher and his six techs did a great job getting everything ready and 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 getting the Chromebooks back in and getting them turned around and passed back out. However, as you probably heard, there were a lot of dissatisfied parents, and rightly so, when they picked up, you know, possibly Chromebooks that were either dirty or damaged. So I think that we've we've gotten past that. I think the the guys in the buildings did a really good job getting that turned around, and we're headed in the right direction. So as you can see from the survey of how many were satisfied with the support that they've received with technology this school year, there's a very small percentage in the one and two range, which are dissatisfied with the technology and the support that they've received. So we would have to assume that roughly eighty, eighty-five percent or better are at least satisfied or very satisfied to extremely satisfied with the support they're receiving. Is that good enough? No, it's it's not good enough, and and we feel that we need to drill down and find out what some of these outlying issues are to technology because especially if these students are in remote learning, naturally, the the tech is a must, and and even sitting in the classroom in their cohorts. It's a must that technology is always working. So we will be drilling down to to find out exactly what our issues are on these lower numbers. So how were you satisfied with the instructional technology tools and platforms that you're being asked to use for learning? For example, Google Classroom, Accelerate Education, Seesaw, IXL. There again, you can see that the numbers were quite good. However, we do feel that there's a disconnect with the amount of tools that are being used and and I think some parents are anxious about being able to log into all these different tools that are being used. So Matt and the crew and Leslie are looking into ways utilizing, like we use Clever, which is a way that that kids can use a single login to get into several different applications. I believe we've got some issues with that that we're working through, but overall, I I think the numbers are looking good. We just need to drill down those, some of those issues.
I'd also like to say, Chris, in a district our size, we basically have two people trying to support our staff with the use of these programs. And so it's pretty amazing the job they've gotten done. We're trying to support them and our staff doing their own PD and trying to pick these up where other districts are placing basically one full-time person in each building. So kudos to your department for that.
Absolutely. And and we also need to realize we've got about ten thousand devices out there in circulation. So even in our our K one, where we have touch devices, we're also sending devices home with all those kids just in case it 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 comes up that we have to have that rapid shutdown. Again, we have those devices that are already at home and and we're ready to to run with remote learning.
Chris, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure can.
And I I ask now because I doubt there's comments in that will answer this. Is there anybody in the buildings that can assist with any of this that maybe would step up? And we could get them educated and trained, and they could be like kind of building experts so that they can alleviate some of the work with your team?
Yeah, we do have some some people out in the buildings that are assisting, and and they're doing a great job. We've also set up a few things that you can take a look on the website, and we try to direct parents to. We probably need to work a little harder on getting out that information. But on the website, you would be able to see where we have a Chromebook frequently asked question that's very good for parents and students to go look at. There's a request form, so if they need, if they have issues and they have a device that is functional somewhere in the in the house, they can fill out a form. And we've also started up a hotline so that if anybody has any trouble, they can call in twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, and and someone will return their call. Also, the state of Ohio has contracted with the Ohio Connectivity Champions, which is somebody that that they've hired to help schools with connectivity issues, understanding that a lot of times, problems that that parents and students are having is even though they have internet connectivity, maybe it's not substantial enough to to do the video chatting and things like that, where it takes a little higher bandwidth, or just maybe they're they're having trouble with their tech at home, and they need assistance. If they call them, they'll contact us and let us know if it's an internet issue. And then that's where we can use the grant through the state of Ohio to assist them with their internet connections.
Great. All right, the next part? Alright, the next part?
That's me. So the next two questions, the scale is a little bit different, so I'm gonna kind of talk you through that, so. This question, you're looking at. How are families and students rated the amount of work that's been assigned this year? So if you look at this, the one in the two bars. Indicate families or students that felt there was too little work. One would be extremely too little, two would be somewhat too little. Three is still neutral and then four and five would be they feel like there's too much work. Four being somewhat too much work, five being extremely too much work. So whereas with the other graphs, we're kind of looking where they shifted to the right or to the left. With this, if you're getting the amount of work right, you would expect to see a bell curve. You'd expect to see kind of your one and your five, you'd want those to be the lowest and somewhat even. You'd want your two and four to maybe be a little bit higher, but also about even. And then you'd want the majority to be around the three because that that would mean is about half of your kids. Evenly split feel like there's too much work and there's too little work. You don't want. You know, the majority of your kids to feel like they're not getting enough work or they're getting too much work. And so when we look at this data, especially the students, you can see that. You know, more than fifty percent of our students do feel like they're getting somewhat. Too high a workload or extremely too high a workload, so we're not hitting that bell curve. As much as we'd like to to see. So we're having some conversations around why that may be, we've we've kind of talked about that. In teachers heads, you kind of think about, well, when we, when I did this activity with my students. You know, I would give read directions to them, explain the directions and then it might take them about fifteen minutes. But possibly in a remote setting or where students are doing a little more work independently. Kids are having to read through, kind of figure out what's being asked of them, exactly what they're having to do. And so that may be taking more time than typical, so we, this team. Is really working to collaborate with our building administrators. To kind of look at this and talk this over with teachers, why this may be and what we can do to kind of work on this moving forward. If you want to go to the next one, Todd?
I have a question on that part.
Yeah.
So on on the, how would you rate the amount of work that has been assigned to you this school year? Are the, how do these results differ between? Remote or in-person?
When we look at remote and in-person, it's it really wasn't that big of a difference, so. For example, at high school, the students that felt it was too high, so the four and the five was. Sixty-nine point four percent, that was for remote, for your in-person, it was seventy-two point three. At middle school, it was a little bit higher for remote, sixty-one point one. In-person was fifty-one point two. Elementary, remote was fifty-one point two, in-person was forty-four point three, so we really didn't. Notice a huge difference in the amount of work, it didn't stand out to us, the difference between remote and in-person.
Thank you.
The next question that we asked had to do with how difficult is the work? And so this is that same thing, the one and the two bars are that it's too easy, either extremely too easy or somewhat too easy. And then the four and five would be the. Too difficult, so four is somewhat too difficult, five is extremely too difficult. And then three is neutral, again, you be, you want to look for that bell-shaped curve. This one to me isn't as noticeable of a shift, you're getting a little closer to the bell-shaped curve. But even still, you can see. That thirty-two percent of our students felt like it was somewhat too difficult versus that. Six point three percent felt it was somewhat too easy and you'd expect those to be a little bit closer, so. I think the amount of work, that kind of disparity is what we're a little bit concerned about. Again, we've talked about what, why this may be. A lot of. You know, things that when students are working independently, a teacher will kind of explain the directions verbally. Give directions, signal to them on how to do things, but when they're having to do some things independent. They're having to read through all the directions themselves potentially, and so. That may feel a little bit more difficult, especially for our students that may have a reading disability. Or for our limited English proficiency students where. You know, it's it's hard to read directions in English, whereas if the teacher was kind of talking them through, they'd be able to do the activity quicker. Or it would feel a little bit easier because of the help of the teacher. So that again, we're working with building administration to make sure that we're meeting our students' needs. We're not overwhelming them, but we're still giving them rigorous instruction.
Yep, Dustin?
Yep, so just one slide here on social emotional support. Holistically, you can see the trend is is positive. As you dig down a little bit further, what you won't see on the chart. Is there is a discrepancy between our in-person and our remote learners, particularly at the secondary level. It is no surprise that our remote secondary students are feeling a bit disconnected. Because they're not enjoying the fruits of advisory, the teaming model, connectivity to their teacher. To that, to that higher degree, you know, I imagine when they speak with their teachers about content, it's about, it's about strategies of math or. Or reading. The piece that is missing, that's probably missing in school holistically is that social emotional connection. That's so important and that our teachers do a fantastic job of, I'll tell you, our teachers are feeling it too. I was at a, I was at two BLTs today and heard very clearly from the teachers that they are also. Feeling this sense of, it's a bit of dread, they 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 really miss all that connectivity, but holistically. The 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 survey came back in a positive light, but we have some work to do, particularly with reconnecting. On a social emotional level with our remote students.
Thanks Dustin. And now to Jenny. Jenny?
Can't hear. Sorry about that. I'm just going to ask you to bear with me a little bit because I have a prepared summary of the comments put together, but as I've been listening to all the questions. I wanted to try to add in answers to a lot of those questions, so we'll see how this goes. So first of all, at the end of the family survey, our respondents were given the opportunity to respond to the question. Is there anything else you would like us to consider when revising our models for the second semester? Because that's the actual purpose of our survey, to figure out how we can revise our models in the second semester to and improve our models. First, we'd like to thank all the families that took the time to complete the survey and share their opinions with us. As you noted at the very beginning, there were over three thousand families that completed this survey. And I'm going to tell you that the majority of them chose to make a comment. And we have reviewed every single one of those responses, I assure you. Brenda shared earlier that often people respond to a perception survey based on something that happened today. Or happened yesterday. But we have to remember that we respect everyone's opinion and everyone's experience. And so we want to make sure that we value the comments that were made and do everything we can to use them to improve our models. So first of all, the majority of the comments were statements that really clarified or reiterated the. The respondent's position with regard to the previous questions that we've discussed, for example. Families who were not in favor of a hybrid model took the time to make comments that told us why. You know, I, my family can't do that, we work, I, you know, I have students in multiple grade levels and I can't. You know, I don't know how that would work for me. So those were a lot of the comments. Families shared specific examples of what they consider to be too much work. There were a lot of comments that, you know, my child got this many assignments or this happened. So those, those were very specific things that they shared with us. I want to address off my script here, safety protocols. A lot of, a couple of the board members asked, well, what do you mean by what were their, what were their concerns about the safety protocols if they were not satisfied? Family comments included very specific concerns about whether things were being consistently done in all buildings. So for instance, my daughter came home today and said that somebody wasn't wearing a mask. Or my daughter, my son came home today and said that. You know, there were three people that were together or not using social distancing. If someone had that situation where their child came home or they observed it on the bus or something. I think they were, they were commenting on that, which leads me to believe that if they're commenting on that, they truly do not believe that those protocols are being enforced. So that's, that's how, I mean, I, those are the comments that I saw regarding safety protocols.
When you saw those comments, those particular comments on safety protocols. What are you doing to make sure that that gets taken care of?
So that's what, I mean, farther down in the, in the thing, what I was, every time I saw a comment that I could attribute to a specific building. Or a specific department, I shared those comments with that building or department so that we could start addressing those, those kinds of things. So I don't want to use a specific school because I don't want to.
I just, you know, when people give you those. Complaints, you know, what are we doing to, okay. Johnny didn't have his mask on, you know, in Mrs. Smith's class. Are you telling Mrs. Smith, hey, Johnny so-and-so didn't have his mask on, why? Or what are you doing? You know, or the kids were hanging out together on the bus and. And they shouldn't have been together, so.
But remember, this this survey is only October twentieth and on. Had complaints since school started, so we deal with them on an everyday basis.
Yeah, so, but to the best of our ability, anytime we we received any kind of a. Something that that was attributable to a specific school or teacher, we have passed that along so that we can, we can try to address that. The other question was communication. I think that there were quite a few comments regarding communication that ask for more Zoom. I think that there were many, many people asking for increased Zoom time with teachers. And I think that if they were asking for increased Zoom time with teacher, they probably weren't satisfied with the access. Or the communication they were having with their teachers. So there, like I said, there were a lot of questions, a lot of comments related to that. And unfortunately, there were several comments where parents or families said. We tried to email our teacher and we didn't get a response. And that's another situation where if it was specific. And we could tell, then I would share that with a principal and say, hey, we've got an issue with this at the school or this. The specific, you know, grade level or whatever. So we do need, those are things that we do need to to address. Let me think of this, the other comment that I saw a few times was that. Parents said that sometimes the answer that they were receiving was just a repeat of the directions. So I ask a question, the teacher reinforced the directions, I don't understand the directions, I need more help. I need more personal one-on-one. So I hope that kind of answers your questions about the communication. To go on. Many comments thanked specific teachers, schools, or the district as a whole for their response. And last Friday, I spent the afternoon copying and pasting into emails to principals every single one of those positive comments. So that we could also share the positive. That they were receiving. Some comments outlined specific personal issues that families were encountering with remote or in-person learning. And like I said, to the extent possible, we are working to address each one of those specific issues with the appropriate school or department. There were some interesting comments, I wanted to kind of share some things that maybe weren't captured in the data that was shared tonight. There were some comments pertaining to all levels, elementary, middle school, high school. That asked the district to consider safe ways to incorporate art, music, specifically band and orchestra and PE. Back into the daily schedules of our students in authentic ways and not just through virtual assignments. So that was something that I thought was important to share, that that was. Something that I saw very often in the comments. These also included requests to try to increase movement for our in-person learners. Using recess or outdoor activities or PE. Because, you know, because the children aren't moving as much in the classroom and we're trying to keep that social distance, the kids are starting to feel it and I think the families are feeling that. There were several comments that outlined the difficulty of having multiple platforms for learning. Google, Seesaw, you know, all the different. Platforms that they need to get on to do that. And that multi, if you have children's and multiple, children in multiple grade levels. The parents are facing some difficulty trying to navigate all these systems, and so we're listening and that's being shared with our curriculum and our technology department. So that we can kind of start thinking about that and how we can help with that. Finally, the data that you heard earlier reported that less than thirty percent of families were somewhat. Are extremely dissatisfied with the high school cohorting model. I'm just going to say that many of the families took the time, so of those thirty percent that were, you know, somewhat or extremely dissatisfied. Many of them took the time to share comments with the specific reasons why the high school model is not working for their child. So that is something that we need to read through those comments, look at what's being said and consider how we can make improvements to our high school model moving forward.
Well, what are some of the reasons why it's not working at the high school level with those kids?
I think. I think that. There's lots of comments, I mean, there's just too many for me to share right now, but things, things that they were sharing were that their children are. They're not getting enough Zoom time, they're not getting time with their teachers. They don't really see a need to go to school. Why bother if I'm just going to be in a classroom with someone who, you know, that I'm not, it's no different than being at home. I did not write them on my sheet, I could go through and look at them, but. They don't, they just don't like it. They want to switch classes, they want to be back, but then you have to look at the other data about safety and put that together as you're making a decision about the high school model. So I'm, I can answer any other questions, specific questions about comments that you have, but we're continually trying to increase two-way communication with our families. And I think this is a good way. You know, by asking, by asking for comments. We're, we're asking for our families to speak to us and talk to us, so we're going to continue to analyze these comments as well as comments received from students and staff. And work to make improvements. Does anybody else want to, I mean, all of us have read comments. I didn't know if anybody else wanted to address Jim's question about the the high school model?
I I think I can at the end, once I wrap up the finally, the final three things here. And and the final three survey questions were, which describes your overall level of satisfaction with the school experience during the first semester so far? Let me shrink my pictures up here for the family survey. If you look at a one to ten. Twenty percent were the most satisfied. Twelve percent rated a nine, nineteen percent an eight, twelve percent a seven and and seven percent a six, so some pretty high numbers there. Only six, eleven, fourteen, seventeen percent scored at a four or lower, so pretty, pretty high numbers for family. For the staff. Eight, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-three percent of four or lower. With overall satisfaction, I think a lot of that is their own safety and personal wellbeing. And then for our students, you've got fourteen, seventeen, twenty percent of four or lower, so. If you look at what that tells us, so if you look at the three levels, I I think if you you talk about. Jim's question and what's going on at the high school, it's kind of funny, if you look at the students. Response, they had it at a four-two, I believe, for the high school, they were satisfied with the amount of exposure they're having to their teachers. The parents are not, well, if we all go back to where we were parents and when we went to school. We, we had that teacher in front of us, it was the older model. It is a proven fact that kids are being exposed to more self-learning. And exposed to more ways of guided practices on their own where they have to research answers. And do things differently, similar to what kids are doing in college now. And I will tell you that high school is different, it it is easier to have a teacher in front of you who knows how to teach calculus. Our parents aren't going to be very good teachers of that at home, but it also challenges our kids to. Work. work at using the tools and resources they have to find those answers. Same things with physics and other difficult science classes, and so on and so forth. So we intend to look at all this information, make decisions based on what is safest for our kids and staff, but also what's best educationally for our kids. We're at a very difficult time right now. Cases continue to go higher and higher. In Hamilton County, we, we teeter on the possibility of red to purple, which really doesn't mean a lot for schools, because I'll tell you, schools have safety protocols that we do follow. And that makes us a safe place to be, one of the safest places to be, because we follow these protocols. But that does not alleviate the angst and the nervousness that our staff has. But we also have to be champions for our kids, and making sure they are learning. And that is, that is those kids who are trying to get the highest GPA they can, and the highest ACT score they can, or those who are trying to learn the trades they're trying to learn, so they can go right into the workforce. And also those who are sitting at home and not being very motivated to do anything right now. So this survey is great data. We will give access to everyone on the school board, and to our public, so they can see what we presented tonight, and the numbers that are out there. But we're going to go back and revisit all of it, and continue to look at all of it. So, but we have to look at what's safe. So it brings me to one of the last things that we've had to talk about, and I've said from the get-go, the only reason we'll shut down schools is not because of kids getting COVID, it will be for a lack of staff members. And it's not staff members getting COVID, it will be quarantines. And that's what's really hitting us. And if you look at our COVID tracker, you're not going to see very high cases of kids getting COVID and teachers getting COVID. But what you're going to see high cases of is quarantines. And it's not so much teachers being quarantined because of close contacts in schools, but it's activities outside of school. There is huge community spread right now. And you know, teachers are exposed during the day to asymptomatic kids, then they have to go home. And if they have children, their kids have been exposed to asymptomatic kids all day long. And then they have to worry about who they live with, and so on and so forth. So I know cohorting does keep our number of quarantines down. There have been, been some districts over the past two weeks that have had over 1,000 kids quarantined. We don't. We walk into a classroom, and we honestly can point and say the one to the right and one to the left is there. But I can also tell you that we don't have six feet everywhere. In some of our middle schools, we just don't have large enough classes to keep six feet for everybody. It could be five feet, it could be four feet. And our teachers care so much about their kids that they've made movements in their class where they've kept the kids farther apart from each other than they have themselves from kids. And it's backfired in a couple situations. And the kid that happens to be next to their desk, or where they teach from, happens to test positive. It's just coincidental. And because they've worried about the kids more than themselves, they've been quarantined. And you know what? It's, it's caused some schools to be shut down. And, and to have accusations that we are, are taking this too serious, I don't know how you take something like this too serious. We have a, a Hamilton County Health Department has a commissioner who works very closely with us, and puts a contact tracer in contact with us on a daily basis. And they tell us who's a close contact. And we have to tell those folks they're quarantined. We don't just shut down people and go in and go, oh, you got to be quarantined. No, it's, it's very precise. It's taken a lot of our administrators' time. But I, I tell you what, we're not losing as many kids as other districts because of cohorting. So if we make the decision, and who knows what we'll do, we'll do what's best for kids, but we also got to do what's best for our staff's safety. Because if we don't have staff, we can't teach. And if we go back to a seven bell day, and we start changing bells, we're going to limit the amount of staff we have, because you have more contacts. It's just a fact. If you look at other districts that are doing it, it's starting to become a big issue. We, we don't just pick and choose. We follow the guidelines that are given to us, and it becomes very, very difficult. It's a full-time job for Kiva, it's a full-time job for Daryl, and it's a full-time job for our contact tracer that the district has in place. And it's becoming very, very time-consuming for every administrator, because you get that call, like, for example, we had five over the weekend between kids and staff. So now you got to go back and you got to contact trace those kids in your school, and those staff members. Who did they have? Did they plan bell with somebody? Did they have lunch? Where did they sit? Where are they at in the class? Well, for us, it's a little easier. We're in a cohort, so we only know they had that one class. It's the kid to the right, the kid to the left. You start changing seven bells, you got to go to all seven bells, and you got to say who's next to them. And if you allow more kids to come back, you're no longer at six feet. So now, where you would have lost two kids, maybe to the right and left, now you're losing 15 to 20 kids because you're not at six feet any longer. So lots of things to consider by allowing people to come back if we do. But I don't have an answer tonight. We, we've had the data for a week, we've broken it down, we want to get it to the board, we want your opinion on what you want, because you listen to the community members. And so we will present where we think we are, partially at the next board meeting, and be pretty close. But we need your feedback on what direction you want to go at that meeting. Once we present the facts to you, we'll give it to you in advance, we'll put the information out on our website. But with this comes huge decisions. If you bring more people back, we can't have six feet. I think the survey was very clear that bringing more feet back, people did not want to give up the six feet. And we're not at six feet all the time right now. We're already at four and five feet, because our schools, some of them just aren't big enough. Our new schools, they are. But we, if we think for one minute we can increase from 15 to 20 in our elementaries, and go to 20 to 25, it's, we're not going to keep six feet anywhere. And that puts more contact with folks. So some big decisions to be made. Can we get better at what we're doing in person and remote? Yes. Do we strive for that every day? Yes. Our teachers get better every, every time they get a chance to, and we'll continue to work on that. Is there any specific thing that the five of you would like us to look at, or things that you've heard that you are concerned about, or from the public?
Todd, is there any possible way that you can give us, you know, videotape a in-person class instruction thing, and as opposed to remote, what the teacher has to do as far as remote?
Well, to videotape a classroom, we have to get permission from the parents to release any pictures or videos of the kids. So we can.
Saying you could, you can't you just videotape the, the teacher?
Well, we have to, yeah, to release, to videotape any teacher, we've got to work with the union. Lots of things go into that. We can describe what a classroom looks like, take pictures, stuff like that. But that's, it's not an easy thing to do, but we can get you what you want.
That would be helpful.
You could also schedule a time to do walkthroughs with myself. We could stay our distance. We have labs in our high schools with windows where we could stay outside, not have close contact with anybody. We would have to stay our six feet apart, but we would have to make sure we meet the COVID rules as we do that also.
Okay.
Todd, I know a couple meetings ago, when we were talking about, you know, rolling out COVID protocols, there was some discussion around, there were things that were going to be building specific, because it may not pertain to another building. Are we, are we, can, like, reviewing this data, like, for best practices? We're finding, like, hey, at school A, we found out that this works great, and then we're sharing that to school B, C, D, E, and E?
You know specifically what you're talking about? I'm not sure what you're referring.
No, I don't actually have an example. But I know that, like, there was, we had a comment, it was a few board meetings ago, a couple board meetings ago, and I asked about if a staff member has a question, you said they would go to their building leadership, and then they would discuss a solution at that, at a building level. The solutions that they're coming up with at a building level, are we reviewing them to see if there's advantage to implement any of that in the other buildings?
Oh.
And it may not be, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we just met with, we gave the opportunity for every staff member in the district to meet with us about a week and a half ago. We did a Q and A where we put all their questions together on a form, and all the answers, shared that with every member in our district, staff member, and then administrative teams are meeting. And then we meet bi-weekly with our union also. So we continue to do that, and share out everything we find.
Okay. And then is there any plan about the choir band and that? Are we going to start implementing that from the younger kids up? Like, I know they're doing some of it in, in high school, because my daughter's doing some of it. But from what I understand, it's, it's been null and void from elementary and, and middle school.
Yeah, it becomes difficult because of the guidelines you have to, to cover in order to do it. So instead of have the space, but if, if there is interest, there could be some after-school guidelines that we could do, because we, we are trying to cover the instruments. We've been able to do it for the high schools, we could do it for the middle schools. It's just finding the space to do it. And then the parents, like, do I want to do it after school? Do I have the transportation? But to do it during the school day becomes the difficult part for that. So we're hoping for that discussion, and having our teachers provide input for that with our administrators. But like Jenny said, that was listed on a lot of surveys as comments. So PE, art, music, we can definitely look at that. We're also doing, going with a schedule for a season of nightlights and show cards. So that piece is in there with the singing, they have to be spaced out, masks, so on and so forth. So all of that is beginning. And you have drum line and stuff like that, that's all beginning too. But we can look at the lower levels and see what's possible.
Good. I, I guess my comment would, would be, anything that we can get as close back to normal as, as possible, if there's a way of working that into it. And I'm not saying that retrospectively, that we should have done something differently. I'm just saying, as we plan moving forward, as much as we can get things back to normal, I think parents, staff, kids are all going to feel a little bit more comfortable. I mean, it seemed like, it seemed like the fall sports, we were able to implement a lot of stuff. Now granted, I get that the majority, if not all of them, were outside, minus volleyball. And I know this is a little bit more complicated, but just as long as we see that same effort across the board for everything would be, I would, I would advise that, I guess.
Yeah, there's been an equal effort for everything. And don't think for a minute that there wasn't issues with fall sports. We've had lawsuits all over the state for volleyball, soccer, football. It, it continues to mount, and continues to be problems. We continue to look at what we can do, but we are in the middle of a pandemic that just saw the highest two weeks of cases of COVID, and it is at the most dangerous time we've ever seen. We hope to get through winter sports. Our wrestling teams are already suffering significant amount of quarantines and cases. So very possible that some of that could be shut down. So we will continue to look at all of it. We don't pick and choose. We have not made any decisions to shut anything down. It has all been state-directed.
Okay.
Todd, when I look at the numbers of the response we got from families, students, and staff, it appears to be pretty high. But for example, 601 staff responses, how, how many staff did we send that survey to?
Every staff, and we have 1,200 employees.
So only half?
Only 50% responded.
That's very disappointing. What about parents or families? How many families do we have with, yeah, families?
Anybody from AO know the amount of families through enrollment?
8,000 something?
I mean, we have 8,800 students, that doesn't mean we have 8,000 families. So anybody got a ballpark?
Yeah, it's in front of me here. So we had families only fill the survey out once for all of their children. So that's not the same as the total student enrollment we wouldn't expect. But we had about 47% of our families represented by the surveys, is what we came up with. So similar to staff, right around that 50% mark.
Can't hear you, Pam.
... you know, is so valuable. I can just say, as a board member, and I don't know how you feel, Todd, as the leader of this district, but in my opinion, there is no excuse that only 50% of our staff took the time to fill this out. We are trying to figure out what is best, what's safest for not only the students, but the staff. And we have a lot of responsibility on our shoulders, and when only half our staff bothers to even let us know, it, it's just unacceptable. My, my question would be, why haven't they? And if it goes back to the same old, they don't think people will listen, or they think there's going to be retribution, or whatever, then we have it, that's a whole nother problem. But I, I'm just curious how you handled this as the superintendent, when you see these numbers, because this is about them. I mean, this is about our kids, but it's also about our staff. We want our staff to be safe. We want our staff to be comfortable. We want input from our staff, and we need it from all our staff. Thank you to the ones that did do it, and thank you for your honesty. But I, I do not understand why the rest of the staff didn't fill it out.
I, I know we do more than other districts have thought about doing. We are meeting bi-weekly with the union. We have met with each school individually. We provided an opportunity on Zoom, a week, Zoom, a week and a half ago, we met with Element, we met with K through 8, or I'm sorry, K through 5, and then we met with 6 through 12. We had 100 on the 6 through 12 meeting, we had 175 on the K through 5, and then we met with Classified and had maybe 15. So you can provide opportunity after opportunity, and we arranged them at different types of, times of the day, so they could get on. But we've been relentless with trying to give them opportunities. So I feel like, they feel like their voices have been heard, and whether they fill out a survey or not, they feel like they have an opportunity to speak. We also feel like our administrators are working with them. They have the pulse of what's going on in their building, and they're working continuously also. So I don't feel like they're not speaking. I think we have 20% that is scared to death of COVID. And it's, it's, we're seeing more and more of it every day. We're seeing mental health issues that are starting to roll in, and then it's becoming hard to keep things going. And that's why we've had to close some, some grade levels. And the more the cases go up, the more fear that's out there. And now that the election's over, we'll see what happens. But you go from being the number one concern up there, to if you looked on the Inquirer today, you got to go 15 articles before you even find anything on COVID. So maybe that will calm things down. But the one thing that's not calming down, over 5,000 cases. It is huge community spread. It is everywhere and anywhere. And I, I mean, I feel like we think that we know where they feel and how they are on this. And I don't know, I think the survey has great data.
My question back would be, so we're looking at all these students that pick and choose what, what assignments they do. Well, maybe they feel like they already know that part, or they've already expressed that about that topic. If you put out a survey, and you've asked everybody to complete it. Now, if you put it out and said, oh, if, if we met with you on Zoom, you don't have to fill this out, that's another ballgame. But you put this out, and you ask the staff to fill this out, and you're asking these five board members to make decisions based on how we move forward in January, I'm sorry, I'm upset that 50% of the staff could not and would not take the time to fill it out. And I open up my telephone to any one of you to call me, and please let me know why you didn't fill out the survey, because I'm here to represent all of you. And right now, I only know what 50% of you think. That's it.
I would think that if they're really concerned about COVID, and the spread of COVID, that they would be more at to fill this survey out, instead of getting 50%.
I don't know.
Your question about, you asked about retribution, just so you know, the staff survey and the student survey, were, we didn't collect any emails or anything like that. So if they submitted it, it was anonymous.
And the only reason, Lindsay, I said that is because I know that has been a reason in the past to not participate in something. So I, I'm not saying there's any reason that they, I mean, I, I don't think there's any reason that they shouldn't participate. But I just threw that out there, because I, over the years, I've heard, I've heard that before. So.
You know, I don't know about.
I appreciate everything, everybody here. A lot of work's gone into this. In addition to everything all of you are doing every single day, night. All of you are doing every single day, night, weekend, and then on top of it, doing all this with the survey is a lot of work. And I do believe we've gotten some valuable data. And, you know, we'll never in a perfect world get a hundred percent of everybody to fill out a survey. But I I think fifty percent of the staff is very, very, very low.
Honest with you, I I agree with you. I mean, back years ago, when we were talking about when they wanted. Done a pleasant run, they wanted uniforms. Shoot, you have eighty percent of the parents. On that survey, give you their opinion whether they want they want them or not. I mean. You know, okay, fifty percent of yous. Made comments, participated in the survey. Well, the five of us board members, should we even take that into account? Well, it looks like the other fifty percent. Really don't care to make the comments. You know, should we just go ahead? You know what? We're gonna pick this. This way, we're gonna go, you know, in January, or this way, we're gonna go and not take into account. I I I don't know. I I kind of agree with Pam. Fifty percent is nowhere near where it should be. I mean, you know, and I I don't know what the answer is and why it's not, but we need to find out. Why half of our teachers aren't, just just tell us that everything's anonymous. I mean, or do you put your name on on the survey, Jenny? Or is it all anonymous?
No, everything's anonymous. There's.
So I don't see why you can't have more than fifty percent of your staff. That are gonna give us your opinion. You guys are in the trenches teaching. We're not there. We we're not there to see it. We want to see what's working good and what's not working for you. I I don't know that if half of the teachers don't tell me what what is working good and what's not. I mean, we're the ones making the decision and half of you aren't telling us what you think. So we're just supposed to, okay, just make up our minds and we're supposed to make a decision based on what we think you're thinking? I just, I I don't know. I just, I think that I think it's ridiculous. You know, if you hit seventy five or eighty percent, okay, but fifty percent of of your staff answered the survey? I don't know. You know.
One may be asking how often we put it out. I just want to make sure that everyone knows we did put it out multiple times. I don't want it to seem as if. You know, it was only released once. We did send the survey out.
If if you've got multiple times where you. An- answer the survey, give your opinion, and then we can see where to go from there. Great. If it was one time deal. Maybe. But if you've got multiple times to do the survey, then you should do it. I mean, we're or or we're just supposed to be a mind reader on fifty percent of the people that are teaching our kids. I don't know. I I I think it's ridiculous that 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 happened too. I mean, I don't know what I don't know Matt and Mark and Joe, what you guys think, but. I I think it's ridiculous and we need to, maybe we need to send it out again and say, look, staff, we need everybody to participate in this. The board wants to know what you think. I mean, I don't think that's asking too much for us to base decisions on how we're going to teach these kids and and educate them. And not get your input. I I I don't know. That's kind of where I'm at.
My my experience with staff surveys, fifty percent is is probably close to what you average get back with any kind of staff survey. It certainly you ha- absolutely have the right to be disappointed in in the results. But I I think if on average, if if you look at our families, we're what about fifty percent response on that? Todd?
Yeah.
I mean, overall, somewhere around fifty percent. I think I think that's about average. And like I said, I'm not saying you can't be disappointed in it. And we certainly would like more people, but.
Absolutely. That'd be they're the leaders. They're the ones teaching our kids, Mark. I mean.
I understand, Jim, I'm not I'm not disagreeing, but I'm saying there's just a lot of reasons why. People are stressed out, they're they're exhausted, they're they're teaching in a way that they've never taught before. And and we need that information, but before we get aggressive with. Our 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 opinion of the results, I think we have to be a little bit conscientious of. Why they didn't answer. And I'm certainly open for pulling them again and and getting more information, but. My I think in this season. I mean, you don't you don't really have an expectation. I mean, you would like to have everybody participate, but. I think in this season, and especially with. All the political stuff that's going on, people are people are just emotionally overwhelmed. I can see where. They may have taken a step back and just didn't fill it out, be to be honest. I mean.
Well, I I can tell you, Carol and Brenda and Dustin and I all know exactly where our staff is on this. Whether they put it right or not, if you want to go and drill them again and get it back out of them, we can do that. But there are some high emotions going on right now. There is a lot going on. They're not just leaving work and going home and doing nothing. They are trying. All night to work with their own kids and everything else. It is a very, very difficult time. And when the group of us looked at six hundred. We did not see that as being a bad thing. There's a lot of spouses in our district. People who do. So we're probably closer to sixty percent than we are fifty, still not a hundred percent, still not seventy five or eighty. But. Like I said, we have done a lot of meeting, more so than anybody else. We work constantly ongoing with them. If the board wants the survey to go out again, Lindsay can set it out, send it out again, and we can do that. But. I feel like we know where they are and what their opinion is and what we're doing. And the bottom line is sending out again or not. We are still going to have anything, any decision we make, we are not going to be anywhere close to a hundred percent with parents, students or staff. And them being in agreement with what we decide to do.
I I realize you're not gonna have a hundred percent, but. I I you you get twelve hundred staff and yet six hundred people respond. And you can say that you know what, if if I didn't fill out, you know where I stand or where everybody. We don't know that as board members. We don't know what the other six hundred. Teachers think. I I just, I just want to.
They're not all teachers, though. There's seven hundred teachers.
I meant staff, staffs, not just teachers. I'm sorry. I I just, I I don't know what they think. I I don't know. I I I want to know.
Then Lindsay will send out the survey again.
I you have to set up a survey, but just that that's the only thing that I'm saying why. I don't know, Mark, you use the word disappointed. Yeah, I am disappointed because I want to know what everybody thinks. I want I want to know. I want to know their opinions so we can make an educated. Decision on how we're going to educate these eighty eight hundred kids in our school district. That's the only thing that I'm saying is. That that's why I'm disappointed or whatever word you want to use, that we didn't have more staff involved in this survey.
That's why I'm kind of wondering if this is more, you know, how many of the staff that responded were actually teachers? And if the teachers of our district are the ones that are more likely to respond to this survey more than a lot of our support staff.
That's a good question.
Transportation.
I can't hear him.
Yeah, it's sound quiet.
Can't hear you, Matt.
Am I back on?
Now you are.
Now you're.
Okay. You know, so if it's six hundred staff that responded. But five hundred of them were teachers. And how many of our twelve hundred staff are actually teachers? Todd?
It's about seven hundred out of twelve hundred.
Right. So if you start looking at like a, you know, percentage of the teachers that likely responded to this. It's not necessarily like a fifty percent thing. It's a fifty fifty percent of our total staff. But the the frontline teachers that this is really affecting.
That's that's who I want to hear from. I want to hear from the teachers that are educating the kids.
Right.
I mean, that that's the only way I'm gonna know if. This cohorting situation we're doing, or we do a hybrid, or we do this or that. I I mean, I want to know what they think. They're they're the guys on the front lines. I'm not.
Right, but your bus drivers are in the most danger. So you also are having bus drivers who are in the closest contact at the most risk of any employee we have. So we want to hear from them also. So I just want to be careful that we're not sending out a message that it's just teachers.
Actually, Todd, we're sending out the message. We want to hear from all. I'm hearing several of you that it's quite acceptable. That because of everything that's going on, it's A OK to not do this assignment. I'm sorry. With all this going on with COVID, as a board member, this is a very important assignment that was sent out as a survey. To all staff. And to Matt's point, I agree. Maybe that is maybe the six hundred, the majority of them are teachers. But the same thing was popping through my head. I want to know if the bus drivers are feeling safe. I want to know the custodians that are wiping everything down and that are, you know, are they feeling safe? I I want to hear from all of them. So. With only a fifty percent response and us having no way of knowing. You know, it what the breakdown is, we don't, we don't know. We don't. We don't have the information we need, I wouldn't think, as board members. To base a decision on what's best for our entire staff when only half of our staff has told us how they feel. Now, if it's because, you know, if if it's they think we don't care what what their input is, then that that's an issue we need to, that's a whole nother ballgame. But I mean, we're in unchartered. Waters here. You're right, we're in the middle of a pandemic. But there's five of us that are being asked to make a decision, and I don't want to make it just based on, no offense, Todd, but that you and a couple administrators know. What everybody thinks. If that's the case, why did we bother to do the survey on the staff in the first place? If two or three of you know what everybody thinks. We did the survey so that everybody felt like they had an equal voice.
Nobody is saying that I know what everybody.
Voice is half of our staff, for whatever reason, half, half, not even, you know, you know. Ten percent or twenty percent, half. And the fact, I I don't know which, at this point, I'm more upset the fact that. It's so nonchalant on your part that it's okay. I would think if I were you, I would be upset about it too. Why is my staff not letting us know how they feel?
There is nothing nonchalant about this. We our staff is under tremendous pressure. They are folding as we speak because of the pressure they're under. And so now we're going to go back and tell administrators to put more pressure on our staff. Because our teachers are worried about what's going on on a daily basis. We will put more pressure on them to get the staff results they need.
As usual, you're turning this all around, Todd.
Time, Pam, I'm trying to respond to what you're asking. You're calling us out because two of us.
You don't think this is pressure to make a decision on.
It's pressure that we're gonna make a recommendation to you based on the data we have. Yes, and 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 part of what we do is Brenda and 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 Dustin, as he said earlier. Goes to B L T meetings, and I think he stated earlier, he heard what the staff was saying and asking. So. We will gladly go back. All you had to do was say, well, we would like more information. We've heard you loud and clear. That you would like more people to give results on the survey. So we will resend the survey out. We will also ask the principals to do their best to try to get their staff to fill the survey out. We will also go to Bob and Yolanda and try to get transportation to do more of it. So we will try to get more data for you so we can. But we do feel confident. That we know the pulse of where our staff is because we are in constant communication with our principals. Who work with their staff on a daily basis, and we have an understanding where we are.
I got a question. Lindsay, how long does it take to take that survey?
This survey didn't take too long. There were probably.
Minutes, twenty minutes?
It's a little less than that, I would say. It depends on whether or not you wanted to submit a response. There were about. Ten to fifteen questions on each survey, I believe, probably closer to ten. But there were spaces for you to add commentary. Well, if you, you know, depending on how much you wrote, it could have taken you. A bit more time.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I think we have a consensus of the board that they would like the survey to go out again. We will gladly send it out again to our staff. We will urge them as much as we can to give a hundred percent feedback. Lindsay, is there any way to differentiate? Well, there there is no way because there's no way to identify who's already put it in. So we're gonna have to ask people to double do it. So if they've already did it once, we're gonna have to ask them to do it again, or data is not gonna be. Able to differentiate between somebody giving double the responses.
Not what the survey, what the board is looking for. We 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 want to get more than fifty percent. Of the staff response so we can make an educated decision on this. I I don't want to make a decision on the recommendation you're gonna make if you're for only fifty percent of the people or fifty percent of the staff. I mean.
And we've got to make sure when they do it again, we don't have the same people responding and we don't get double the responses.
Why couldn't we just, why, why could, why are we making this harder than it already is? Why can't we just send this out? We you you talk to your building print administrators and say, the 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 board wants to get the information, the input from all staff. Because their input is very important to us. If you haven't filled out a survey, can you do so by Friday? Boom. So we won't get double. Only the ones that didn't fill it out before can fill it out now. We're not gonna know who they are because it's all. You don't put your name, you don't put whatever. But hopefully, you know, we'll get another at least couple hundred inputs this week. We're not asking all staff. It's there's no reason for the six hundred people that did it to do it over. We're just asking if you didn't get a chance to fill out your survey, we request that you get it in by Friday. I I mean, it's I I I don't understand why that would be so hard.
It's it's not hard. We'll we'll send it out and we'll definitely get them to them. So Lindsay, can you, you could probably release that tonight, couldn't you?
I can, but just based on what I know about our staff responses, I don't think that releasing it tonight would be a good idea. I think maybe first thing tomorrow morning, when our staff is at their computers. Maybe, you know, may render a better response.
All right, we'll take care of that.
Mark, what do you and Joe and and Matt think of that? Because I don't, I don't want to speak for the five of us.
I don't either.
So the only thing I want to say is Pam made a comment that we're okay with that. She made a mention that other board members may be okay. Pam, don't don't speak on my behalf, first of all. I I am disappointed it's fifty percent, but I'm not going to ta- turn on my staff. Because I'm upset about that. Now, we can have civil conversation around. How we go about getting more responses, but the aggression and attitude that you had was unacceptable. Let me just be very clear about that.
Okay, first of all, Mark. I don't understand why we can't do what I had just suggested.
We can. I'm not saying we can. Pam, nobody's saying that. Everybody's been in agreement to redo it.
And and not redo it, not redo it, not anybody that's already put the time in is fine. I just really want to make sure we hear all staff so we have the information that we need. That that that's it. And I I don't want it to stress anybody out to redo something that they've already done. And I apologize if I if I got passionate about this because to me, this is a lot of weight on our shoulders. I mean, I'm hearing from the parents that don't like the cohort, and I'm hearing from the ones, you know, I I'm hearing all sides. But I I just, and and I think the information that came in tonight and what was presented was great, the way they did it. How detailed Jenny is with the comments. All of that has been great. So if any of you think I'm attacking you, I apologize for that. What I'm frustrated, I am frustrated. That this this isn't doing something ho ho. This is something really important that affects, directly affects the staff. So I I value your opinion and really want your opinion. Before any decisions are made. That that's it. That that that's all, that's all that I'm saying. And I'm not speaking for any board member. I spoke first. I said what I said. And that's how I feel. If if four of you say you're fine with moving forward or you're not fine, I'm not speaking for you, whatever way. I don't know how Joe feels. I kind of heard what Matt said a little bit, and then his mic went off. I think he had a point too. I spoke what I felt. And 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 that's that. I always have and always will. Want to know what our staff. want to know what our staff is thinking. And I I I, and that's that. That that's it.
I agree with Pam. I I think that fifty percent does not constitute the AOs saying we have a pulse on what the staff, whether they're teachers, custodians, uh, whomever that works in these buildings. Um, and the the thing is, we need to get more than fifty percent. And I agree with with Pam here, and she's not talking for me. This is the way I feel about it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with uh, you know, sending out a second request, basically, for uh, you know, responses to the survey. And that's that way, anybody that, you know, didn't respond the first time around, gives them a second bite at the apple. And um, and maybe be sure to make it, you know, clear that we're interested in hearing from all staff and not just the teachers, like I kind of implied before, that, you know, that that might have been, you know, the uh, more more likely responses and some of our support staff.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm with, I I wanna hear from the people that didn't send in the survey. That, that's what I want. The people, hey, you guys that didn't send it in, could you please do it? The board wants to know your opinion before we make this decision. You know, if 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 they don't wanna, and if it comes back and ten or twenty people send it in, okay, great. You know, if four hundred send it in, then we know it's important to the people. You know, that's, that's my only thing. You know, and yeah, and you know what? And if somebody thinks that I was disappointed, I am disappointed because I wanna hear from everybody. And you know what? It is what it is. And if they don't like what I say, so be it. You know, um, I wanna hear from the staff and I want their opinions. Simple as that.
We will try to facilitate taking it as much as we can. We'll try uh, try to put extra Chromebooks and um, transportation, maybe some in the cafeteria area. Um, and I say that so we can help classified employees. Teachers should have access for their own. Um, and then we will um, give them a deadline by Friday. And we will preface it with, if you did not take the survey, get them in. Um, all of us would have liked to seen more than fifty, but there's also a a timeline here of um, of any changes that are being made because we have to talk to our staff and and talk about the safety protocol. So um, we will look at that and um, look at the survey and see what we can get in. So we'll keep you updated on how many we get in. Um, I don't think there's any way possible to go back and look because we did not have a clarifying, unless Brenda, you know of one. What, did they check off if they were classified or certified employee on the survey anywhere? I don't think they did.
We did not have that and we did not ask building on purpose, but we do have our survey set so that only one response per email should be allowed so that people that are already done it should not be able to do it again. And people who haven't would be definitely able to do it again.
Right. So we will put that out first thing in the morning. We'll get a little letter with it, um, asking them that we really feel it's important to get feedback from a hundred percent of our employees and we'll put that out. Um, and then we'll try to get better information to you guys. Um, and I fully understand why you're wanting more. So it's not that I'm happy with the amount of response or disappointed. It's just, we had what we had. We've tried to put this information together. Um, so we could present it at this work session and we'll continue to break down the data we get and adjust the numbers as we have because we already have the uh, charts together. So um, we'll take care of it from there. Anything else?
Oh, Mark, do we need to um, set an executive session for the board members?
Yeah, for the next, Todd, we were gonna ask for an executive session um, at the next board meeting.
Monday night?
Yeah.
All right, I'll just have Donna put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
I just need you to email me um, what Donna needs to label it as.
Okay.
Mark, are we gonna try, are we gonna try and meet in person on that executive session?
But Todd, are there any guidelines around that right now? Are we under any kind of mandate?
Uh, if we're going to go to executive session, I just need time to arrange the room so we could all keep social distance in that room. Um, guests would still send in their questions and it would just be the board because there's already ten in there. So there would be no guests allowed.
Okay. All right. That'll be, that'll be, if we can do that, that's how we'd like to set it up, please.
And that would be for next Monday, correct?
Sure. Yeah.
That's the meeting you're talking about, right?
Yeah, we can do it. We can get it done by then.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? Comments, questions? So that brings us to the adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Question. Second.
That motion passes five to zero. Thank you, everybody, for participating in our work group.